Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, August 21st, 2017 at 6:30 PM, also known as the Day of the Eclipse, in the board meeting room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the administrative building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice President Snow will now lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
I'll start with the vision, "Every student, every day, prepared for success." In the mission, "Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college career and life."
Roll call please, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy?
Here.
Gadding? Holman?
Here.
America?
Present.
Pearlman?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Scanlon?
Present.
Snow?
Here.
Williams?
Present.
And Mrs. Gadding did let us know that she had a prior family commitment this evening, so I would entertain a motion to excuse her absence tonight.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Ms. Williams. Roll call please, Mr. Ray. Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion passes. We will now move on to board and superintendent communications, and first up is our superintendent, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President, and first off, let me thank the board. Many of you were at the leadership kickoff with all of our district leaders, and we are really about to take off with August 17th as the start of school year. And I did want to hand out an article from one of our speakers at the leadership kickoff that was in the AASA National Journal. The speaker, as many of you know, spoke about the loss of a teenage son to suicide and the importance of how we look at social media and how we look at cyberbullying and all those areas that sometimes we don't spend enough time as we look at test scores and some of the other parts of student success. Sometimes we don't recognize that it's important to develop that climate and culture in a way that's kind to everyone, and I thought our speaker, which was Dr. Mark Adler and his wife, Joanie, excuse me, and they were fantastic, so I appreciate them helping inspire our staff and thinking about the importance of what we say and do. I also wanted just to take a moment to thank the State Board of Education. As you know, last week, they voted nearly unanimous to take Druid Hill off the state priority list, and I just think that's an incredible statement to Sharice Williams, the principal at Druid Hill, Melissa Comine, who worked closely with Sharice Williams, and really everybody else that was a part of the team, the teachers and staff, everyone that worked together to take a school that the state had said was one of its lowest performers and now says is an example of how to turn around a school. So I wanted to thank them publicly and to thank the State Board of Ed and the Commissioner of Ed for recognizing their work. And then next, I wanted to mention to the board, and I'm happy to pass it around, on Thursday night, we spent two hours with a community group that's going to be providing some recommendations to our school board regarding the bond issue and potential Phase Two. So I have the notebook that we used for our first meeting. We've got another one scheduled for this Thursday night. But again, a committed group of community leaders and staff members, I know that I saw Bridget Donovan from OEA is participating with us in that group, and then we've got a lot of community members who are very supportive and passionate in trying to figure this out, so thankful for all of them and for the time that they're investing to come up with this recommendation. One more reminder for the board, on Saturday at 2 o'clock, Northwest Dedication, a great opportunity to see an incredible bond project that's going to make a huge difference for the Northwest Husky community, so hopefully, board members will be able to participate, although I recognize it's difficult at this time of year. And lastly, I'd just say, we are gearing up for August 17th, the start of the school year, and we've worked diligently with our bus contractor, we've worked diligently with our staff. I continue to be confident that we're going to make huge strides compared to last year, and we are working every day to make sure that those strides are met. So, thank you as we start this school year and get ready for some excitement when 52,000 young people sprint through the doors on that first day and get ready to learn in a great environment. Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any board members who have reports they'd like to share? Dr. Holman?
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to piggyback on Mr. Evans' comment about the dedication ceremony at Northwest High. If you can, please try to come out and join us. This is a dedication ceremony not only for the renovations of Northwest High School, but there is going to be a dedication ceremony in honor of Jack Holstrom for the Activity Center. And then it's also going to be followed by a Jazz Festival beginning at 3 o'clock PM, so if you're able to come out, it would be an enjoyable event. There's going to be a tour of the building, there's going to be light refreshments, and then there will also be some food trucks there for dinner if you're planning on staying for the Jazz Festival that evening. Thank you.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you. Dr. Holman, when she was giving her update, I opened my calendar and I remembered before our next board meeting, we're going to have some additional groundbreakings as well as some ribbon cutting, so just FYI, Burke's groundbreaking ceremony is on the 9th, if anybody would like to attend from 9 to 10. Multiple Pathways graduation is 11, from 11 to 12:30 on August 11th at the Metro South Campus. It's an awesome graduation that the students do. They let the students give shout-outs, and there's always a student or two that performs, and seeing these students from different backgrounds come together for an amazing ceremony. Also, next week, on the 15th, there's the Indian Hill ribbon cutting, as well as the Lotha ribbon cutting, from 5 to 6, and then the other one is from 5:30 to 6:30. And then on the 16th, Franklin Elementary, from 5:30 to 6:30. So, we have a lot of events going on in the community right before the first day of school.
Ms. Williams?
Well, I just wanted to congratulate all of the School Excellent Award winners this year. That was amazing to be up there and shake all of these amazing administrators who've really made the difference, and to see a roomful of administrators that really are very focused. And just reflecting on Dr. Roberts, I believe that was her name, Dr. Robin Jackson, one of our other speaker, of talking about how we were going from bosses to leaders to becoming builders, and so I look forward to be builders with my fellow board members and all the administrators, teachers, and staff across this great district. It is amazing the work that you are all doing, and I'm very happy to be a part of that collaboration across the district. And then I also wanted to take a professional moment of privilege and just thank Mr. Evans and our elementary executive directors and all of the P4K elementary school principals as well. After a long day of leadership kickoff, they stayed and really learned about some changes within the program that supports OPS students, and really wanted to send an extra thanks to Mr. Wakefield and to the executive directors, because we had a brief conversation of talking about how do we really engage our community partners with our leaders to make sure that before they're in the thick of things, you know, what's coming to their school, what do those changes look like? And so it was nice to kind of be able to pilot that conversation. So I just want to thank our staff again for being amazing. It is such a pleasure to be a colleague with you in this work, working with students, and here's to a great new school year. Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon?
I guess I'd just like to, you know, congratulate the district and also everybody that's been involved as we go through. We've got a lot of, whether it's ribbon cutting or groundbreaking, I mean, we've got so much going on and successful projects that have been going on throughout every sub-district within this community. I'll be attending Burke's groundbreaking on Wednesday, and then there's a couple other ribbon cuttings there. I mean, there's so many that it's just, we're getting to that point in this, in the first phase of the bond, that projects have gone very well. I think we've been very transparent with the community, and I believe that the community's been involved, like with the CBOC and other, just input from community leaders, that, you know, I think that we have acted as a school district is very responsible with the first phase, and I think that that should hopefully gain us credibility as we go into the second phase, which is needed for the expansion of our school district as far as facilities. You know, we have done a great deal as far as taking responsibility for our underachieving schools, and Druid Hill shows that, that we are putting our resources where they're needed, and I think that that should help, again, build momentum for the second phase. Look forward to learning what the committee recommends in timing, and that's, you know, it's going to be another huge ask money-wise to the community, but I think that we've shown with this first phase that it's, we're taking this very seriously, and we are responsibly allocating the money that we've been fortunate enough to have. So, I look forward to, you know, going into that second phase and also to finishing up the first phase.
Very briefly, as everyone mentioned, we have a lot of, just a lot of opportunities for community members to get into our schools, whether it be through the groundbreakings, the ribbon cutting, and all the numerous back-to-school nights that are happening over the course of the next couple of weeks. So if you haven't looked on the district website to see when all those are happening, I really encourage you to. I also do want to echo congratulations to all of our schools that received Improvement in Excellence awards. I don't want to call any specifically out, because I know there are some principals waiting to surprise their staff when they come back on the 10th, which is always exciting for them. But did want to mention that we do have our new teacher induction tomorrow morning, which I'm looking forward to speaking at, where our new teachers wrap up their district-wide training and get ready to head out to their classrooms and buildings for the start of the year, which is pretty exciting. Yes, and that is here at TAC, bright and early. Now that my iPad has shut down, we will move on to Item G, which is public comment. We have two speakers tonight who have submitted a request to speak form. The board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour and also limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. We understand people have strong feelings about issues they come to speak about, and so we ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you please do not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray so he can assist us in looking into those types of specifics. If you have any written commentary, please give that to Mr. Ray, and he will distribute it to the board. And as a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. Our first speaker tonight is Michelle Jacobs.
Hi, my name's Michelle Jacobs, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E Jacobs, J-A-C-O-B-S. My address is 4315 North 140th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. All right, first of all, thank you to you guys for, I know you guys are, the majority of you are volunteers, and I respect and appreciate all the time and energy you're putting into our district. The reason I'm here tonight is just a second, need for the second part of the bond. It sounds like there's awesome pieces coming together from the first part, and I know we've secured land for the new high schools, and I just want to keep in the forefront how important it is. I'm an OPS graduate, my husband's an OPS graduate. We have two middle schoolers this year at Buffett, and I am one of the parents who opts my child out come high school, so I have a junior, I will have a junior this year at DC West. And some of you saw, I presented this information also at the Davis PTO meeting, I don't know, maybe February, but not everyone was there, so I just wanted to give you guys a chance to pass this around and take a look at what happens at the opting-out level. I live in Hillsborough, which is the largest neighborhood in Omaha. There's 1,000 residents, and I just did an unofficial survey of where our neighborhood kids go to school and where they end up. And come high school, 45% of the Hillsborough residents stay in OPS for high school and 54% opt out, and I feel it's crucial that we get a neighborhood school for those kids, for all of our kids, so. Any questions? I'm going to pass this around so you guys can take a look at it for second part of the bond. So we're hoping for the mail-in ballot to be approved by September so that we can have that come this November.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Ray, would you be able to take a picture of that so we could have it?
We don't have a copy, but...
Okay, or if you have a copy, you could give it to him just so that we have a smaller record we can keep, too.
I can also email it to you. You can have that.
I will pause while we're passing this around.
I just feel like you have to hold the meeting for tomorrow.
Our second speaker is Ben Poole.
Thank you, Michelle, and actually, some more discussion in support of Phase Two. My name is Ben Poole, B-E-N-P-O-O-L-E. My address is 6318 North 150th Street, so if I were to bring another cardboard cutout, you'd have to just go northwest just a bit, but not much. I'm also a proud OPS parent and a product of Omaha Public Schools, and I want to first say thank you to the board, thank you for the work that you do, the work that you do in the community. The community and the kids benefit greatly from your dedication to the school district and to the city. I want to say thank you. Thanks for your continued service and for this opportunity to speak to you about those items and a current priority that is not being met. I represent several families in Northwest Omaha who live near 156th and Ida. It's the site which was purchased for the specific use of building an OPS high school for the area. Phase One of the bond brought many of us to move here, looking for the promise of Phase Two, which would open a new high school near our homes. We parents are encouraging this board to complete the work and move us forward on Phase Two with the urgency that we believe it deserves. As a parent myself, moving to Northwest Omaha was a big part of my strategy for our kids' education. From our home that I mentioned, on 150th Street, we watched with great anticipation as Saddle Brook, the school, the community center, and the library were being built. Our now 11-year-old son, he actually thought they were pretty much just building it for him, for the purposes of getting to know friends to grow up, go through grade school with them, and beyond, getting to know the teachers and the parents very well. So we didn't correct him on that, in fact, that's exactly how it's unfolded. He is now looking forward to Davis Middle School just in a couple of weeks as a sixth grader. Meanwhile, his sister, she'll continue on to third grade in Saddle Brook, and their four-year-old brother can't wait for kindergarten to start in another year. So far, the strategy is on track, but it is in jeopardy without the Northwest Omaha High School we moved here for. You can look at this issue from the perspective of property taxes, safety, of overcrowding schools, or the quality of education for both the teachers and the students that you're building OPS. I'll address those three things just briefly. Property taxes, passing the Phase Two bond will bring increased property values to Northwest and Southwest Omaha. Without it, approximately 2,400 students are leaving the district. Their property taxes are already following them to the surrounding school districts of Elkhorn, Bennington, Millard, even District 66 and Gretna. Having that money remain in the district will benefit kids in every sub-district of OPS, not just ours. The safety and overcrowding, according to some recent data, the 20-plus portables at the high school level are in West Omaha, are in West and Northwest Omaha. It's a major safety concern to parents. After $10 to $15 million in renovation, Burke will continue to have portables and suffer from overcrowding. It's not just a quality issue, but safety concern for parents, and it's not a sustainable way to lead for the kids. Regarding quality of education, parents, students, and teachers are attracted to schools and districts that continue to invest in them. After renovations of current high schools, we're still not meeting the capacity needs of our district. So, as I said, many families like mine move to the area with a strategy in mind for our children. We're now asking you to help continue OPS's strategy for educating our kids with growth, quality of education, and safety in mind. Please address and pass the Phase Two bond so that families stay where they're at in Northwest Omaha. More families can move here and watch the impact it has on these kids and the community. Here's to a fantastic school year and continued work that we have, and maybe a future ribbon cutting out at 156th and Ida. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will move on to Item H, which is our consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Ms. Williams. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none. Roll call please, Mr. Ray.
America?
Yes.
Pearlman?
No.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Seven aye, one no.
Motion carries. We will move on to Item I-1, which are our action items, and our first item is I-1A, which is the Superintendent Search Committee Recommendation, and I believe Mr. Snow is going to speak on that item.
Yes, so, excuse me, last Thursday, the Superintendent Search Committee, which consists of Dr. Holman, Mr. Pearlman, Ms. Gadding, and myself, met to discuss the relaunching of our Superintendent Search. And in that committee, the objective of the committee, and I'll kind of give you a layout of how our meeting went, was basically agreeing on terms, not just for the committee, but as an entire board, and I will read you some of these commitments, and this was also sent in an email, just so, framework of our Superintendent Search Committee. Members of the Temporary Superintendent Search Committee will commit to serving through the duration of the search regardless of board elections or board officer elections that may occur before the selection of a new superintendent. Excuse me. All members will approach the new Superintendent Search with an open mind. All members will not work to promote any one candidate, internal or external, prior to the interview process. As the Superintendent Search is a top priority of our board, board members will prioritize their schedules to be available for meetings, interviews, that are part of the search process. Board members will not engage in manipulation of the Superintendent Search process. And this is just a framework of what, starting the search with an open mind, and also, I apologize, Tracy Cassidy is an alternate on the committee. So we decided to reissue the RFP, and issue the RFP if the board approves it, that will go out tomorrow, August 8th, and will close August 15th at 2:00 PM. On the 16th, the committee will have a full day to review the RFPs, and the committee will meet on the 17th to make next step recommendations. I'm trying to think about if I forgot anything. Does anybody else want to speak on that or anything? We'll bring the recommendations to the board on August 21st. Now, depending on how many search firms apply, we'll either bring one, two, or several, so that just all depends on how many apply.
Are there any board members that have question or discussion? Mr. Scanlon?
You, and maybe I misheard you.
Sorry.
The Superintendent Search, did you say temporary committee?
So this is a Temporary Superintendent Search Committee, so it's just a committee just for this current Superintendent Search. And our, my objective is hopefully to have a superintendent selected by December 18th with this committee.
Okay, I would just recommend making sure that we're very clear in that we're not looking for a...
Temporary.
Temporary, yes. That's just, when I heard that, I was, you know, cold sweats again.
Sorry.
The other...
And this, hopefully, we can run, we can have a timeline that runs similar, if not parallel, to the timeline that hired Mr. Evans on, with the Superintendent Search starting in the fall, selection by December, and giving us about five months of a good, smooth transition between Mr. Evans and his successor.
Okay, and I would, I would just, a couple of different things I would say that, you know, always worded as recommendations from the committee, because we had a lot of, a lot of folks that said that we were not being transparent in the past, so just if we can, you know, saying that the committee recommends this, and then, you know, again, just careful usage of verbiage, because that beat us up last time, and I'd like to, I'd like to see it go a whole lot smoother with a lot better results than last time. So I just, just kind of some things to throw out there at the beginning.
One of the things that we decided to do as a committee is, after each meeting, to call every board member. As the chair, we will rotate it to a different committee member, just so everybody's getting the same information, to call every board member, just to give them an update on what we discussed in the committee, as well as prior to that meeting, Ms. America calling about anything that is going to be on the agenda.
And I think that's a great idea, and I think it's great that you've got it rotating, so board members that are not sitting on the committee can get different perspectives from different board members, excuse me.
Mr. Pearlman?
Just for the public's edification, can you just kind of explain what it is that the committee will be doing and, just as importantly, what they won't be doing?
So the objective of the committee is to create the framework of the Superintendent Search. The first thing is kind of guiding that process, why the board makes the selection of the next Superintendent Search, the firm to reach out for candidates to apply, but also on the back end. Once the Superintendent Search starts, hopefully by September, the objective for the committee is to plan community meetings, as well as lay those frameworks out for the entire board to approve, so we can bring recommendations, I apologize, so we can bring recommendations to the entire board to approve, so we can have those community meetings in the fall. One of the things I would say that I could take back from the previous search is we didn't have enough time, we didn't have as much time, and I think with us actually starting the search with the committee and actually going through and coming up with a framework that we can approach the entire board with, I think will allow the community adequate time to meet the top candidates during the search.
Any other board questions or comments? Okay, seeing, and this is something that we... Technically, since it's coming from committee, we don't need a motion, but if someone would like to make a motion to reissue the RFP so this official is on record, because that has been our practice in other situations as well.
I move that the Board of Education reissue the RFP for the Superintendent Search Consulting Services on August 8th with a closed date of August 15th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second... Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Mr. Pearlman to reissue the RFP for the Superintendent Search Consulting Services on August 8th with a closed date of August 15th. Are there any further board discussion? Mr. Scanlon?
Although it's not necessary for, when you have four board members making a recommendation, I think that in this Superintendent Search, I think it would be wise for us to always make that motion and to vote on it publicly, so that there is that record and that, again, we can try to make sure that we're as transparent as possible.
And to clarify, we would still have to vote as a board. It's just per Robert's rules, when something is moved from a committee, there doesn't have to be a separate motion at the board table. But I think we have, the majority of our previous committee motions actually got a motion at the board table as well.
And I, I understand that, but I don't think that Robert's rules is necessarily well-known by a lot of folks that will be looking at us to make a good decision.
I will agree. And on top of that, Mr. Scanlon, there will be minutes taken during the committee. So any votes taken in committee, you will be able to go back and look at which board member voted for which recommendation coming up, so.
And I guess for the public's clarification, with it only being four board members on that, will those be public documents?
Yes.
And I believe after the meeting on the 26th, those minutes were sent out to all board members afterwards, so that will be continuing as well, too.
And they were sent out to board members.
Which since they were sent out to board members, it makes them a public document.
Public record, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's transparent, very transparent.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second on the table. Seeing no further hands. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Hallman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Eight I.
Motion passes. We have officially restarted the Superintendent Search. So I look forward to all of us working together over the next few months as we go through this fun process. We will move on to item I-1B, the First Reading of Recommended Policy Changes. Do you have anything, did you receive any feedback or comments, Mr. Ray?
There are no changes from the information item supplied at the last board meeting.
Okay. Are there any further board comments or questions? Mr. Pearlman?
Just on policy 8346, and, you know, I know there'll be further action on this, so I could have, perhaps should have had this discussion sooner. But I, I would be more in favor of a hybrid system for public comment versus dialing it back to three minutes. You know, maybe a system whereby after an hour, we dial it back to three minutes or something like that. So hopefully, we can have more discussion about that moving forward.
Ms. Williams?
So I just wanted to chime in on Mr. Pearlman's request. I have a strong, I feel strongly about not doing that, just because if you give the first, the group, you want, you want to be able to give the constituents the same amount of time. And so it's either, for me, it would be either we do or we don't. Either it's five for everyone or three for everyone, and not a five, and then after the hour, three. I will just say, sitting in hours and hours of public comment, that doesn't really help the community relations with the board. So I would just say, the more that we give them, keep it standard, either one or the other, so that way someone doesn't feel like they got shorted that time. Because quite honestly, two minutes is quite a bit of time to be able to get your point across or to share, you know, with whatever. And at times, we also have our young people up here, too. So I would, I would just like to, as we make this vote, or have any further discussions, if we potentially would like to amend this at some other point, is that we keep the times the same for everyone. I think that that would be, fair isn't always equal, but in this case, equal is equal, and that's fair.
Any other board questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the attached policies? And there is a series of numbers that I will let the person making the motion read off.
I move to approve the recommendation of policies 1060, 1250, 4033, 5008, 5101, 5103, 5404, 5406, 5418, 5424, 8120, 8150, and 8346.
Second? Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Williams and a second by Dr. Hallman. Is there any further board discussion? Ms. Williams?
I would just like to remind the board that typically, our past practice has been that we did not waive the second reading, so that constituents and public can review all of these policies before we do a second reading, so I just wanted to remind the board. Thank you.
No problem. Seeing no further discussion, roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Hallman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
No.
Seven I, one no.
Motion carries. As Ms. Williams mentioned, these will come back for a second reading unless there is a motion to suspend the second reading. And I do not see one, so we will bring them back at our meeting on the 21st for a second reading. If you do while going through, notice anything, please get in touch with myself or Mr. Ray or Mr. Snow and let us know, because if we do make any changes between now and then, they will come back as a first reading again. We will move on to item I-2 and I-2A, which is our Budget Workshop slash Presentation that was folded into this meeting, and I believe Ms. Connie Kanoki will be our main presenter.
President America, Vice President Snow, members of the board, I would like to give you an overview of the process that we use when we develop the budget each year, since many, some of you are new to the, to the district, and I'm sure you're curious how we do all this. Just to give you a big-picture overview of the budget development, in February and in March, staff at the buildings, the principals, meet with HR to discuss what their staffing needs are. They, they use a board-adopted staffing formula to determine what the needs are at each of the buildings, and then they also discuss what the issues are and what the staffing needs to be at the buildings and why. During this process, staff are added to a building where needed, or they're moved from one location to another. And research provides an estimate of what they think the student population will be. So that helps develop the staffing that they need for the building. Now, the student population number gets updated frequently, and now that we're in August, it gets updated weekly, and they're meeting weekly to be sure that if there's any hotspots where they need to put more teachers, that all of that's been covered. These meetings that we have in February and March with the principals give us the groundwork or the base layer of what we have for the budget. So after the building budgets are entered, we then send prior-year budget and staffing information to all the departments, and then we ask them to let us know what their staffing and budget needs are as well. We combine all of this information together to develop the framework for the next year's budget. We, after we get all of the expenditures pulled together, then we start looking at the revenues and what we anticipate to receive for the next school year. Now, when we develop a budget, we're required by law to have a balanced budget. That's where our resources and our needs are balanced. We can't have one where we have more needs than we have money for, or vice versa. So throughout the year, Mike, Ashley, and Ning from the accounting office do budget analytics, where they're looking at the three-year past history, and they're projecting for the next year, looking at what the budget is and seeing where we're at on our revenues. They do that throughout the year. It's a process that we're, we're looking to see, are we missing something? Is, are we supposed to get more money here? Are we spending too much there? So it's a process that's constantly monitored. So Kristy and her staff, Madonna, Amy, and Laura, they enter all the budget information onto, into the database, and then that's put onto Open Book that you see out on our website. If you go to our main homepage, the lower-left-hand corner, you can click on Open Book, and then you can see the 2017-18 budget that we have developed. When you look at that budget, you can drill down for each department, each area, see how much is budgeted, how much staff is there, and so forth. So it gives you a very detailed information about what we have for the budget. So tonight is a workshop where we go over what we went through and what our parameters are, what are some of the things we would like you to consider to adopt the budget. We're going to have the budget hearing to adopt the budget on September 6th. And between now and September 6th, there still could be changes to the budget, depending on what, what the funding is. We don't get our assessed valuation from the county until August 20th, so that could have a big impact on what we're going to be spending and how we plan to move forward. So what we're going to talk about now is a general fund budget for 1718 of $608 million, and that's a 4.6% increase from last year to this year. And our total overall budget for OPS that we're proposing is $813 million. So with that, I'll start our process. So in this presentation, I'm going to give you an overview of what the calendar is, what we have to do when we're developing the budget. We're going to look at assessed valuation information and what we are projecting for our revenues, what we have for state aid, what we plan to do for our expenditures, proposed increases, proposed reductions. Then we'll talk about cash flows, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. So our budget timeline is all in statute. We have a budget workshop, which we're having tonight, and then our valuation gets certified on August 20th. Then in September, we're going to publish notice of our budget hearing, and then have the budget hearing and adoption on September 6th. Then we're required by statute to file the adopted budget with the county, with Sarpy and Douglas County, and then with the Department of Education. And then in October, we have to have a resolution setting the property tax. And the, well, the county has the resolution to set the property taxes. So schools, when we develop the budget, they're limited by two mechanisms to control spending. They're limited by the annual budget growth, which is the basic allowable growth rate, and then they're also limited by a property tax levy limitation, which is $1.05 per $100 of value. So looking at our past history, we have given, we had gotten some preliminary estimates on what our valuation is. So we developed this budget with the assumption that we're going to have a 2% increase in our evaluation. Again, we don't know what our actual valuation is going to be until August 20th, but to develop the budget and get this far, we had to make an assumption. So based on historical information and also our preliminary values we got from the counties, we're using a 2% increase. So the ability for schools to pay for their services are affected by state budget policies. State aid cuts and limits to your revenue can affect, can make it difficult for schools to fund all the needs that they have. So we, we have state aid cuts. The state went in and reduced how much they appropriated for state aid this year. And then we also have that property tax limitation. So I have this chart, and I thought it was interesting to show that the bottom line, the dark blue line, is state aid from 1977 up to fiscal year '14. And then the top line is property taxes. So every time state aid goes down, property tax goes up. But for a district like ours, where we are at our maximum levy, we don't have anywhere to go. When the state reduces the revenues, then we don't have an option of increasing our property taxes. So we have to be careful on what we're doing with our funding. Another thing that's interesting to note, and I don't know if you can see it very well here, but it's highlighted in yellow. And this is just a diagram that shows how much funding we get from the federal government, from the state government, and from local property taxes. And then it also compares us with other states. And as you can see, we get a little bit of federal funding, a little bit of state funding, and most of it comes from property taxes in Nebraska. And I'm sure you've heard all of the talk about reliance on property taxes, and it, it really is true, and there's, you know, documentation to show how that's working. So what we do when we develop the budget is we estimate how much revenue we think we're going to be receiving. For property taxes, this year, we're no longer part of the common levy for the learning community, so that means that all the property taxes we raise are based on the levy of our OPS district. The 2% growth in valuation is actually going to show a property tax decrease of about 19% from last year to this year. And that's just moving out of the learning community into levying taxes for our district individually. To offset that, state aid has increased by 27%. So our property taxes decreased by about $52 million, our state aid increased by $62 million. So overall, we got a $10 million increase between the two. We also received money from the state, and that would be like your, the special education, different funding that we get from the state, pastor grants, and then also federal sources. And you'll note, on the federal sources, it seems like a lower amount than what we actually receive, but that's because we have a separate fund called the Grant Fund, where we budget for all of the grants that we receive. And this year, in our grant budget, we are estimating $88 million in grants. So that's a separate funding stream. Usually with grants, whatever you get in, you budget to spend. There's no estimating of revenues or anything else. It's just, you know, you spend what you get, basically, so. So overall, looking at all our property tax reduction, plus our increase in state aid, our other estimates of receipts, we are anticipating about a 2% increase in revenues from last year to this year. So I mentioned Open Book out on our main, main website, and that's where you can kind of drill down and see what it is that we're spending. And in this proposed budget, you'll notice that for salaries and fringe benefits, that's 85% of what we spend as a district is on salaries and benefits. For salaries, we spend $353 million for that. Benefits are $141 million. For building, for purchase services, that is $78 million, and then supplies is $31.5 million. So we have a district with 52,000 students, about 8,000 employees, so we, we have a big budget to fund every, every program. So then if you look at the proposed budget, when you're drilling down, regular instruction is 50% of the general fund budget. And again, the total general fund budget is $608 million. So 50% of that goes to regular instruction, and then it's broken out by each of the divisions, where special education is 12% of that budget, transportation is 6% and so forth. So that's how it's split out. And again, Open Book gives you, you know, a clear idea of where, where that money's being spent, if it's on salaries, supplies, whatever it is. So that's a good place to, to look to see how we're spending our, our monies. So the requested increase from the buildings, after we went through the staffing conferences, we are in a third year of a three-year negotiated agreement with the teachers, and that calls for a 5.5% package increase, which was about $23 million. So you'll see the building increases are mostly for salaries for the buildings. Then we had an alternative program. We started the middle school, the alternative middle school. We started the middle school, the alternative middle school. So we had that increase. And then we had interfund transfers. And then central office is actually showing a decrease from last year to this year. So overall, we had a 2.11 increase in revenues. And we have a 4.6% increase in expenditures. So in order to balance the budget, because our total increase is going to be the $26.7 million, we're going to use our increase in revenues, which was the state aid, and then the 2% increase in our valuation. And that's going to offset the estimated expenditures. And then also, we'll have to use some cash on hand to balance the budget. So just as an aside or for some additional information for you, Nebraska is ranked 19th in per pupil spending in the United States. So we're not the highest spending, we're not the lowest spending. We're kind of somewhere in the middle. The national average spending per student is $11,946. And Nebraska is just above the national average at $11,392 per student. For OPS, our average per pupil cost for that same period of time is $11,214. So we are below the state average and below the national average, what we spend per pupil. Nebraska's spending growth in the last biennium was 3.5% in fiscal year 1516 and then 3.8 in 1617. TOSA Growth, that's the state aid formula, the Tax Equity and Educational Opportunity Support Act, has averaged a growth of about 4% over its lifetime and 3.3% in the last 13 years. Again, the state aid was reduced last year by the governor. They made some changes in the local effort rate and how they calculate the formula. And they also reduced how much went out to schools in net option funding. So even with those reductions, because of our student growth and our needs with poverty and ELL, we did see an increase in our state aid of about $10 million. So obviously, our increase would have been more if they hadn't reduced state aid. But they did reduce state aid, and this is where we are with our funding. So to give you a summary of the increase in the budget for central office and the buildings, the elementary increase was $13.6 million. Middle school was 3.5. High school was about 6.8. Alternative programs was 2.3. District operations was 2.8. And that was mostly as a result of a reduction in transportation costs because of the student assignment plan. Curriculum and instruction increased by $1.2 million. General finance and administration actually decreased by about $1 million. And then we have a contingency fund to handle any unexpected expenditures that we may have. So when we have an audit each year, they look at our unrestricted fund balance. That's what's not committed to any other item. And so over time, we've kind of hovered around 10%. Last year, we got it to 14.4%. And this fund balance helps us on our bond ratings. When we issue bonds, your debt ratio is something that they look at. And so our unrestricted fund balance is something that's important to us. So in 2016, our unrestricted fund balance was 14.5%. So if we have to draw down our cash balance, that affects our unrestricted fund balance. So it could have an impact on our bond rating. So that would be a one-time thing that we could do. But then next year, when we begin the budget development process, we'll have to start looking at programs and different expenditures to see where it is we can try to manage our growth in that regard. So for our budget priorities, it's always the buildings and students that come first. We look at recruiting and retaining quality staff through the compensation. We look at at-risk programs. We look at curriculum and textbooks. We look at student technology, deferred maintenance needs, and then strengthening our academic programs. So that's something we always look at when we're developing the budget. So for the building, in addition to what they got through their staffing conferences and through the staffing formulas, there were some additions that were included in the budget for some of the buildings, like Washington Elementary, JP Lord, the virtual school, the expelled student program. So the total budget increase on top of the staffing formula was $332,000. So some detail of that would be, there was a special ed para increase at Washington. JP Lord needed a 1.76 increase in paras. We got 3.5 athletic trainers for our high schools. All high schools have one athletic trainer. This is providing them an additional halftime FTE for athletic trainers. And that's offset by UNO providing $84,000. The Omaha Virtual School was increased slightly. Secondary Success is the new middle school. That was increased by 0.8 FTE. And then for expelled students for supplies. So during the last school year, the district's teaching staff was reduced by 4.0 FTE. And that was due to shifts in enrollment and the closing of Saratoga. So we took the staff at Saratoga and spread them around throughout the district. And overall, the total budget increase in staff was 20.47 FTE at the building level. So in addition to what was given to the departments just based on what their current staffing needs were and what they'd budgeted the year before, there were also requested increases at the central office of $4.1 million. So for district operations, transportation requested a 1.0 FTE for staff assistant. And that was part of the audit from the Great City Schools. They recommended that there be a staff assistant for the director. For the economic inclusion plan, we included mileage. Operations increased by 2 FTE for relief engineers. Schoolhouse planning for overtime. District communications needed a part-time staff person to cover maternity leave for one of the staff members. And then we also had to increase legal fees because of some of the lawsuits we've incurred over time. Special education also had increases. Obviously, special education is something that we always need to fund. And they have needs that we can't put on the shelf. So we had to increase the expenditures for special education as well. So in the planning of this, district operations eliminated a senior buyer position. So they got a staff assistant in transportation, but they didn't fill a position in their office here. Curriculum and instruction eliminated 3.88 FTE due to attrition. Special education actually added 16 FTE to address the needs of staff. And then we have the student assignment plan, the partner plan, which is expected to save approximately $6 million in contracted transportation costs. As I mentioned earlier, teacher salaries for 1718 reflect a package, average salary increase of 5.5%, which was $13.8 million. Salary increases and other cost increases will be funded with state aid due to enrollment increases because as enrollment increases, state aid would increase. Reallocation within the budget as a result of efficiency efforts and then the use of cash on hand. And that's what I have for the budget workshop. There will be more detail coming as we get closer to September and when we get the valuation. Also, the detail is out on Open Book for you to look at as well if you wanted to drill down into any of the departments or any staffing that's going on there. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, we will open up to board member questions. Mr. Snow?
I don't really have any questions, but I just want to thank you for putting together this presentation. For the parents at home, for anyone in the community, it's easy to follow, easy to read. And one of the things that I just want to give another shout out is just to the student assignment plan. I mean, saving $6 million, that is very significant, especially for the sports. So kudos to Ms. Williams that was on that committee, Ms. Gotti, who's not here, and Katie Underwood as well, for really taking that charge for our district and our board, which in, you see the increase in special education. You see the increase with the 5.5% salary increase. I was just talking to some people. It's the largest in the district's history for our teachers. So you could see us reallocating. And one of the things that's really interesting, if you go back a few slides, just looking at the reduction of spending at TAC alone. A lot of people, in the past, a lot of us all ran on that, on reducing the size of the TAC building. And you could see right now the district reallocating those resources back at those schools. So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Ms. Williams?
So thank you, Mr. Snow. So as we talk about transportation and just that we're saving $6 million, I just really want to say to our public, there's two things at play. I know that when we originally ran, those of us that ran in '13, transportation was huge on the commentary from our public saying that we spend way too much money on transportation. So I'm excited to see the decrease in those funds. However, I understand the growing pains of families kind of going through the student assignment plan. And unfortunately, this year and next year, I think families will feel a little bit more as they're transitioning from an old student assignment plan where you could go anywhere and get transportation. But just know that those of us that have worked toward this, you know, we really want to do our due diligence to the entire district. And those were some very complicated and very hard conversations to have. But looking at the district as a whole, we will see this become a good thing once we get those bugs worked out in the transportation. And just at some point, I'd like to, maybe if yourself and Mr. Wakefield could just get the numbers to Mr. Rada Sher, I would like to see kind of how many staff in some of those central office decreases, how many staff have we kind of moved from the TAC building out to schools? Because I think that's also something that we hear a lot from our community is that there's so many folks that are at TAC. And so I would like to just be able to give kind of those detailed numbers as those questions come in, because those are things that people want to know about. It is amazing to see, Mrs. Kanoki, the work that you've done with our budget since you've been here. And I personally want to thank you because you've really helped me understand this large budget in such a different aspect and a different way. And you've also catered to each of the board members so that they can really understand and dive in to understand the financial portion of our responsibility as board members so that we're making informed decisions as we vote. And not just the budget, but other things that are directly related to the finances of our district. So I just want to personally give you some thanks for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon?
I guess I'd like to just add to some of Ms. Williams's comments. Having sat on the budget committee, you guys have done a great job of fulfilling the requests that board members had as far as audits of the different departments within TAC, audits of the school buildings themselves, that not in the public eye, but it has really been drilled down into what all goes into the budget, what's needed, where can we make some savings? Because I think you said $608 million? And then total $813 million?
Yep.
So that's a big bit of coin. So I just appreciate you guys going through and taking all the requests of the budget committee. And I know Mrs. Gotti is probably a little upset that she's not here tonight because she likes the numbers. And she's been a big driving factor in this. But, you know, and I also would like to thank you guys for having HR come on to that committee because that is the biggest portion of our budget. And I think that really helped to open up the dialogue in one meeting of with yourself and Charles Wakefield. Could you just briefly, just for the public knowledge, you're talking about tax valuations and the assessments that are given throughout our district. We have a very diverse, we have a very diverse district. Could you briefly explain that those dollars that are assessed for property values are not necessarily spent just in that sub-district, but they're spread across district-wide?
Yeah, when we do our tax collections, we levy a dollar five levy on the total valuation of the entire school district. And then that comes into the general fund. And then it's distributed out to all of the buildings to pay for salaries and benefits and for purchase services and for supplies and materials. So it's all in one pot. And then it gets dispersed out throughout the district.
And with that, I just know that one of the speakers that's, or maybe both of them for the new high school out west, would that be the, I guess, highest probability of an increase in tax valuation that would bring more money into OPS's?
I don't think it would be an increase in tax valuation unless you had more buildings going up or something like that. What would make the difference is the state aid that we would get per student. Right now, I think it's, I think it's like $8,000 per student that we get in state aid. So if, say, those 2,400 students came back to Omaha to attend the buildings that we're opening up, that would generate more state aid.
I guess where I'm going from, or coming from, is if the properties are worth more because there is a high school.
Right. Yeah, that would generate more valuation, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and I guess it's, you know, I think I've always viewed the West High School and the South Omaha High School as they're tied together because they both bring benefits to the district. And then last thing that I had, just sitting on the committee, the budget committee, and having, I guess, I don't know, three, four years, it just seems that we are now a little bit more focused on spending our tax dollars more wisely. And I would appreciate to continue that. And, you know, if the public has any questions, starting, you know, with Open Book and also just really a focus on the budget of not just, oh, we budgeted for that. Okay, why did we budget for it? Does it make sense? I really appreciate the changes that I've seen since you've come on board, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pullman?
Thank you. Ms. Kanoki, also want to thank you for all your hard work on this. I know I requested a meeting with you and Mr. Evans a couple of weeks ago. It's been about a month. We met a couple of weeks ago. And it was a lot of help to me to understand some of these issues. One question I have, maybe you answered previously, is the cash on hand, is that one in the same as the unrestricted fund balance?
No, it's not, not the same. I guess it's kind of the same. I mean, unrestricted fund balance is an auditing term that when we have our annual audit done, they look at what our liabilities are and what we have obligated versus what we have taken in. When we have a fund balance, we budget each year. And sometimes we don't spend as much as we've budgeted for. So there's cash on hand at the end of the year. So it's kind of a mixture of the two, I guess, is what that is.
Okay. And so after spending, I think it was $14 million or so budgeted for next year out of the cash on hand, is it spent every year? Is it projected to be spent every year?
We've generally used that for spending because, you know, we're restricted on our levy and we're restricted on state aid. And if there's a program or a need, you know, we would use the cash on hand at the end of the year to help fund any of the expenditures. So that does roll into our unrestricted fund balance. So that's something we want to keep an eye on because we can't go below $10 million. an eye on, because we can't go below 10%. It's a board policy that we have a fund balance between 10 and 20%. So we're limited that way as well. So we're looking at all different angles. That's why so many folks are involved in the budget development, and also in monitoring our receipts and expenditures and all of that.
Okay. You also mentioned that, you know, we fortunate to have a 27% increase in state aid this year. Is that something, you know, part of that is due to the elimination of the common levy. Is that something that's going to be permanent, or is that just a temporary Band-Aid that the state is providing?
Well, we, you know, with the state, you don't know, you know, what their revenues are going to be. But new this year, with the state aid that was certified as the Community Achievement Plan, and that generated $5 to $6 million for the district in additional state aid. So that's part of why we had that increase, was because of that. But then we also had an increase in our poverty, number of children living in poverty, and then also the ELL. So it's kind of a, all of those things combined. And I'm hopeful that next year, we'll see more state aid, or that it at least remains the same. We would, it would be difficult to have a cut like that to our revenues, but you don't know from one year to the next what the state's doing.
Right. I also have a couple of questions about the impact of our unfunded, or underfunded pension. Can you kind of talk about that a little bit? And the information that I received from a recent meeting that we have is that the district will have to pay over the next six years $120 million in ARC payments. And can you kind of explain the impact that that's going to have on our budgets over the next several years?
Well, you know, we have limited funds, you know, like on our unrestricted fund balance. So we cannot consistently be making those payments without looking at programs, maybe looking at other areas that we may have to look at to find the revenue that we're going to need to make the additional contributions.
Okay. And also the, I know we've, I'm kind of bouncing back and forth, but we've talked about state aid, and it's obviously unpredictable year to year. Can you describe a little bit what the typical growth in state aid has been for OPS over the past, say, decade, and what it was this year? And the impact of a $1 billion biannual shortfall might be?
The shortfall, you're talking about OPS's short?
No, the state.
The state shortfall?
Correct.
Well, I think, it's hard to say with the learning community, but I think over time, our state aid has increased since I've been here. It's increased probably 5% each year. I spend a lot of time looking at the formula, making sure we are getting the maximum that we can, and then also making sure that we're accountable for all of our receipts and expenditures. So with legislation that they have coming out of Lincoln, you have to be on top of it and monitor it, because it has such a huge impact to the district our size. So I think it's a number of things. They could still reduce state aid, and we could still get additional state aid because of the needs of our school and the number of students that we have. We have a third of the children in the whole state. So that is, you know, something that we're always looking at. We, I have a projection I try to do with the state aid formula, looking at what I think the costs are going to be and what our students are going to be, so we can kind of estimate that. But the unknown is, you know, if they decide we have to cut $10 million off of state aid, where they're going to get it from. And so that's where, you know, being on top of what the legislation is and how it's impacting the formula is so important.
Okay. I think I just have one more question. You mentioned during your presentation that the district receives approximately $90 million in grant funds?
Yes.
If I heard that accurately. Can you explain how much of that comes from the federal government versus how much comes from philanthropic donations? Is that broken down, or is that able to be broken down? If you don't have that right away, I know I'm catching you without preparing you ahead of time on that.
So from philanthropic organizations, I believe it's something like 28 million from philanthropic, and then the rest comes from the federal government?
Okay.
On the grants.
Okay. Well, that's all I have, but I do want to echo the earlier comments, you know. You've been dealt a tough hand with the economic situation we have and the pension situation, but I think you've done an excellent job explaining to us and dealing with what we're facing here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Just to tie back in, kind of on the multiple questions, I think the big question that Mr. Pearlman asked that really is a huge question is what happens with that state funding? It went up 27%, essentially because we lost 19% of property valuation when the learning community no longer was the common levy. And so the state revenue went up because our property assessed valuation went down. So the question becomes, which is why we have to really work closely with our legislators, what happens with that 27% increase? Does it go up over time, or does the state decrease it over time? That is the huge, I think that's our biggest question, is what's going to happen in Lincoln to impact that 27%? And certainly, the budget shortfall at the state level is a concern when you're looking at a number that has a lot of support from state revenue. So I do think that's one of the bigger questions, that as we prepare for the legislative cycle, how are we going to maintain support for a large urban district in this circumstance where we have less property valuation because we're no longer in the common levy? So it's a great question.
Now, one thing, too, to consider is that we are an urban district, and we still have student growth. We've had, which is kind of unusual for urban districts, I think we had about 523 student growth from last year to this year, and that impacts our state aid as well, because the more students you have coming in, you get more state aid. But there are a lot of moving parts in the state aid formula, so it's, we hope for the best each year.
Ms. Williams?
Well, I just would be curious to see, as we're talking about a future bond, really looking at that as an investment in our district and regaining those 2,400 students, to see how much that will impact our state aid moving forward. So I'm plugging that in there for the conversation of the budget. But I think that will really help us figure out some of the financial challenges that we have. But again, I just want to give my deepest gratitude to you for, you know, really coming in and being very frank and earnest about where we are. And again, to echo Mr. Scanlon, in budget committee, really, you know, it's not just numbers, you're really saying, okay, this is what it looks like for staff, and this is how it's, we're going to be impacted financially. Because we do want to do diligence and take care of our staff, and making sure that we have those. But you've really just come in and kind of fine-tooth combed everything, and really have helped us be accountable to our stakeholders for our budget. And I'm excited to see you in this process as we kind of move forward, and we, because we're coming for our 2,400 students.
Yeah, I know.
So just to let the other districts be unnoticed, that we want our students back. We are a great district, and, you know, we want to be able to serve them as we should. So thank you again, Connie.
Anyone else?
I also want to thank you and the budget committee, because I know that essentially our budgeting process is working with moving target, because you have party valuations come out, people can protest their evaluations, and they have hearings, then the county sets valuations, you have the legislature setting the state aid, which that's always a moving target. There's supposed to be a date it's approved by, but it seems like every year, they change it up a little bit. So it really is a moving target until we get basically to the end of August, and then we're approving the budget in September. So I know there is a lot of work and effort that goes into that. And as Mr. Pearlman mentioned, if you do have specific budget questions, reach out to Ms. Kanoki and get a meeting set up to go over things in more detail. Or reach out to Mr. Ray to facilitate setting up that meeting. Sorry. A couple of things that I noticed, I know at first glance, you might look at it and say, oh, my gosh, why did central office special education budget go up so much? But when you look at it, even though it's based under central office, those are things that are in our schools. Like, those are extra nurses that are in our schools, and resource teachers, and psychologists, and people that are actually in the schools providing services for students. I think that's something that gets overlooked sometimes when we're looking at the budget. And then, I've been trying to plant this seed in everyone's mind, so I'm going to share it with you all as well, is just letting people know that when they get that property tax statement next year, it's going to look different, because there's not the learning community levy anymore. And so you used to see the school levy separated between the learning community and OPS, and there's not, there'll still be the small learning community levy for their services that they operate, but the large learning community levy is actually going to be rolled into the OPS levy now. And so I know I've had some people ask, it's going to look very different, even though it's basically just the two being combined. So something to keep in your minds as you start getting questions from people.
Well, and the thing unique about OPS is that there are pockets that had increases in value, and then there's also pockets that had decreases in value. So that's, again, another moving target when we try to anticipate revenues, so.
That's very true. All right. Well, we look forward to getting updates. And like I said, if you have specific questions, please get in touch with Mr. Ray to get individual meetings set up. We do not have any reports for tonight. So Mr. Snow, if you would like to do our motion for closed session?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest, for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals discussed with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Dr. Turnquist, Mark Warneke, Connie Kanoki, and legal counsel. Negotiations, pending litigation, real estate, and legal advice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Ms. Williams. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Scanlon? Snow?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Hallman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Motion passes. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Dr. Turnquist, Mark Warneke, Connie Kanoki, and legal counsel. Negotiations, pending litigation, real estate, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:52 PM.